Hello and welcome. My name is JP DiMaggio and I'm your moderator for tonight's Celine School Board Candidate Forum. I'd like to start with a few introductions. Please stand when I mention your name. First of all, Superintendent of Schools Scott Greeden in the back already standing. School Board President David Fries and any other sitting school board members. Thank you for attending. And lastly, any school administrators who might be here. Got a few. And thank you to all of you for attending tonight. We're here to learn about the three candidates who are running for a single open school board position in an election that is exactly two weeks from today on Tuesday, November 2nd. Those candidates are, in alphabetical order, Todd Carter, write-in candidate Marion Faubel, and incumbent Paul Heinicke. Before we get started, I'll take a second to talk about tonight's format. First of all, it is a forum, not a debate. That is, candidates should speak to the question -- to the audience and respond directly to each question, not another candidate. Although I will have a few general introductory questions, the questions will predominantly come from the audience. And here's how. Some people have already started to fill out cards and Superintendent Greeden has pens and cards for the questions to be filled out. I ask that audience members, please make your questions non-personal in nature and general enough to apply to all three candidates. Each candidate will answer each question. When you've completed your questions, please hold your cards up and Mr. Greeden will pick them up and deliver them to me. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. Eric Liedel here, who is the student rep to the school board, has a stopwatch and will help us regulate time. He will put up a yellow card, like soccer here, to inform the speaker when there are 30 seconds left in the two minutes, and then he'll put up the dreaded red card when time is up. With each new question, we'll rotate from left to right so that the same person is not answering first each time. Around 8 o'clock, we'll cut off the questions and give each candidate two minutes to summarize. Okay, we're ready for the questions. I'll start by asking the candidates to introduce themselves to the audience. As you do so, please include your name, your occupation, how long you've lived in Celine, and your association with the Celine School District. That is, who in your family currently is or was a Celine student or teacher? Todd, please get us started.
My name is Todd Carter and I've been living in the Celine area since 1990-ish. I am here accompanied with my wife Nancy, who many of you know. I am an IT consultant and have been working in that industry and in the automotive industry for, it seems like, years and years now. We have two daughters, Kate and Annie. Kate is a very strong runner you may be familiar with, and Annie plays field hockey. She's a sophomore. Kate has since graduated and is off to college. What were some of the other things I needed to hit?
I think you've hit them all. Occupation, how long you've lived there, and association.
Okay. The schools. We have been involved extensively with the schools. Nancy has, as her time as a stay-at-home mom, was very involved with the schools. And I've been involved through coaching SASSA with the girls and have -- at this point, I'm just looking to be able to give back some and be able to help lead the schools into additional excellence because we do have an excellent school system. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Marion Faubel and I've lived here since 19 -- well, fall of 1969, so it's almost exactly 41 years now. Before we actually moved to the district, I graduated from the University of Michigan with a bachelor's degree and a teaching certificate in English and Latin, and I actually did my student teaching in this building when this was the high school way back before they built the next high school and the high school after that. So at that point, a lot of the people who are still in the community were teachers at Celine High in Mildred Haswell, was my Latin critic teacher. I taught for five years in three different states since my husband was drafted during the Vietnam War soon after we were married. And so I taught in Michigan and in New Jersey and in Kentucky outside of Fort Knox. And frankly, it was very interesting to see how education varied and the culture varied from state to state. But in 1970, our son was born. We have one son who's going to be 41 years old in January, and he grew up his whole life in Celine here, went all the way through Celine Schools and preschool, and he now owns a computer hardware company in Ann Arbor. And I'm just thrilled by what he had available to him in this community. So I was involved as a Cub Scout leader and very active in the community for the first 10 years after he was born. I was a stay-at-home mother. I was on the Celine Business Industrial Development Commission. I was on the Celine Tax Board Review. He was on the city council and Mayor Pro Tem at some point. And in 1978, when my son was eight years old, I ran for the Celine School Board. And for the first two years--
Red card. Sorry.
All right.
My name is Paul Heinicke. I'm the incumbent board member running for reelection, which as of late would explain my gray hair. It's kind of a little stressful lately. I've lived in the district for 16 years now. I have four children. Each of them had started in Poop Corner and gone all the way through up to the point that they have. My older daughter is at the University of Toledo right now. My son, who just graduated last year, is at Washington Community College. And I have a seventh grader and a ninth grader. So we're still busy and active in the schools, always have been. I started out helping in technology back in ninth and fourth grade with my daughter. I currently just got a new job, started last week with Blue Cross Bushy Hill. I work in the technology area. I worked in another company for 25 years that was taken over by the state, another insurance company. So I'm happy to have a job. I'm happy to do my work for the schools and--
Right to Marion. Yeah, second question. Wait to Marion to start. What experience or attributes will you bring to the school board?
Well, that'll give me a chance to finish what I probably should have said. In 1983, I became an attorney, and so I've been an attorney for 27 years. I was 40 when I got out of law school. I feel that, you know, in my 27 years, one of the things that I do every day for a living is try to help people solve their problems. They come in sometimes overwhelmed, and I have to analyze that, try to find a possible solution, and work toward that. I've had the mediation training that many attorneys now have had in how to resolve disputes without litigation and without a lot of damage to everyone. I feel that those mediation skills will help. I just celebrated 20 years this year of having my own law firm. I have two other attorneys who now are my partners, so I've run that business for 20 years in addition to being the attorney for 27 years. I was on the board for 12 years from 1978 until 1990, and then went on to be active in the Bar Association and to contribute there. So I feel that I can bring problem-solving skills, leadership skills, sense of business in my background in teaching to bear here. So I find it a privilege to be able to win this election as a write-in candidate.
I think, having been on the board for four years, I think it takes you at least a year, maybe a year and a half, until you really get accustomed to what it takes to be on a board, how things work. My job typically in technology is to try to get business users and the technology people to agree on what needs to be done, even though it's not always an easy thing. So I do have some skills at mediating. I think my record over the last four years would indicate that I take issues, I think about them rationally, I make a decision based on facts, and consider all sides, and I think that's important. We have some big issues coming up in the next few years. There's always something. Seems like we can't get through one year without some big thing happening around here. So it's that type of stuff where you need some consistent leadership.
Should be Todd. No, I should answer the questions.
Oh, answer the question.
Yes. Experience or attributes that you bring to the position?
Gotcha. Sorry about that. Well, as a -- as an IT consultant, just as Paul was saying, one of the things that we bring together is the ability to talk to people, talk to the business users, and being able to understand the things that they have, things that they need, and bounce them off of reality and be able to take those issues and have them identify, you know, what it is that is so very important and get that out on the table so that we can discuss that and be able to truly understand what are the -- what are the things they need, what are the things they want, and come to a resolution that some sort of system would be able to provide. So having done that for as many years as I have now, I'm also much of the opinion that a lot of times a system can't solve the problem. It takes more people interaction. It takes people truly understanding their issues, understanding the reality that they stand in. So that is my one major thing that I intend to bring to the board. The other attribute that I think that I exhibit is a steadfast ability to listen and to truly empathize with other people and to be able to understand, you know, how we can work together to build a solution.
Down to Paul for the third question. Paul, why do you want to be a member of the board?
Well, I think the same qualities that I thought I brought to the board, it still drives me. I have a definite vested interest in the school district. The things that we've done over the past four years, I think, have been important. I think the energy that's gone on in the district right now is good. And I think one of the better things we did was hire Mr. Greeden, which kind of charged him, charged the administrative staff. And I think, I mean, last year's theme was remarkable things, and there are a lot of remarkable things that go on in this district, and I'd like to continue to be part of that. We still have our challenges coming up, and I think I'm -- I think the experience factor is important in a board.
I ran for the board for the first time in 1978 after being a board watcher for a long time. I came to a lot of board meetings and was active as a volunteer in the schools. And I found myself sitting out there in chairs at board meetings wishing that I had more of a voice, wishing that I could contribute in a more meaningful way. And that kept me going for four years, and then I ran again and had four more years and then ran again. I found that when I became an attorney, I wanted to become active in the Bar Association to make a contribution there, and I was elected to the Representative Assembly, which is the statewide sort of Congress of the Bar Association, for two terms. And I'm back here wishing to be on the board again. From what I've seen, I would like to bring my skills to the board in terms of stability and leadership, some experience, some creativity. I have to admit that in the community, I've had some concern about, you know, how many superintendents we've had here in the last 10 or 15 years. And that's one way to solve a problem is just change, you know, spouses or change superintendents or change jobs. And what's even more challenging is to be able to stay in place and bring your resources together to solve your problems in a better way. And I feel that I have the ability to listen, to analyze that, to try to come up with creative solutions that are possible for the people that we already have through training and inspiration and opportunity. Just one last thing. When I first ran for the board in '78, the superintendent in Ann Arbor had been there for decades. The one in Mylan had been in place for decades. The one in Celine had been here for decades. Lincoln had been here for decades. And right now, the -- that's not the way it is.
The question is, why do I want to be on the board?
Yes.
Okay. I am looking to help Celine Schools continue their track record of excellence. There are things that need to change. There are things that need to be kept the same. And I am very interested in listening to all of the stakeholders, the parents, the students, the teachers, the service staff, the business people out in the community, and understanding how we can make things better and then using the tools that I'll bring to help make that change. I'm definitely not here to tell anybody how to do their job, but I am very interested in listening and learning and solving issues as they arise.
Okay. You can keep the microphone for question number four, which is actually two questions with two yes and no or no answers, questions within it, I guess I should say. From the first card, "The school board's current anti-discrimination policy does not protect students, teachers, or staff from discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Is that a problem for you? And if so, what would your plan be for addressing it? Secondly, if you were on the school board last month, would you have approved the proposed changes to the anti-bully policy? Why or why not?"
Okay. Battery light's coming on, so. The discrimination policy. This is -- it's been an interesting month as I've started to tune into how does the school board work and what happens here. I believe that the existing policy is flawed in that what it does is it points to individual groups and says that one group is protected and another group is not. So I believe that that policy does need to change. However, I don't believe that adding additional groups to the policy solves anything. So my suggestion, and I know there will be legal issues simply because we will be fighting what is essentially federal precedent, would be to focus the policy on intimidation, discrimination, and bullying as opposed to focusing on who gets protected and who does not get protected. So thereby, what we would do is eliminate, you know, most of the chaos that we've been experiencing and be able to focus, and we need to focus on enforcement of the policy to be able to say, okay, well, did you intimidate this person? Did you discriminate against them? Did you bully them? And from there, be able to get an answer and take steps as necessary. At this point, I can't off the cuff say what those steps would be, but most of the policy has in it ways of handling this. So I think most of the language in the policy is valid. However, I do say that the existing policy is faulty. And what's part two?
Would you have approved it or not?
Okay. I would not have approved it as it was written, and it is, again, for the reasons that I stated, in that a flawed policy by adding more groups to fight against each other causes additional problems as opposed to fixing the problem.
Thank you.
Well, in the 1980s, I'm the one who proposed the discrimination policy that we've had now for the past 20 years because we didn't have any discrimination policy when I was on the board. And I also proposed the policy against sexual harassment, which is now part of company policies throughout the country. The federal Congress and the state legislature have both passed Title VII at the federal level and the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act at the state level in a way that names protected classes and makes it very clear to employers and places of accommodation, you know, who is going to be protected, the disabled, racial, ethnic, religious, height, weight, age. These are very important to the people who are at risk. The Older Workers Act in this country. We're way past debating whether we should name people or not. A federal court in California just decided that the "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" policy in the military is unconstitutional. We've got kids who are committing suicide, who are getting bullied, who don't feel welcome. We have not one teacher, as I understand, in the Celine district who has come out of the closet, even though there's probably 10% of them here, that don't feel safe and welcome. I would have voted to change the policy. I feel that it's only a matter of time before it's changed at the state and federal level. I think there needs to be clarity by naming who we're protecting. And moreover, when it's in black and white, you feel protected. When you know older workers are protected, the disabled are protected. They like to see the fact that they're protected. They're not just part of some sort of feel-good out there. So I'm in favor of a change. I would have voted for a change. I have the courage to do things that I think sometimes are unpopular, and I think it's only a matter of time this district may be sued for what they call deliberate indifference if they don't have a policy protecting these kids.
Well, because it's no surprise, I did vote no. So I'll talk about a little bit of my reasoning why. For me, it's a cultural issue. I mean, the courts, I mean, people have voted yes, they'll allow their state to have same-sex marriages. The courts, someone will sue, the courts will override it. And that kind of game goes back and forth. So it's not a clear-cut thing across the country. I read, I mean, I have all the studies that I was given. People gave me all kinds of information. I looked through those studies, and the results of most of those studies, they encourage education, to teach tolerance, to teach bullies not to bully and not to harass because as part of my IT-ness and my technology thing, if something breaks, we have to go find the root cause so it doesn't break again. And I think the bullying and harassment is the root cause. Until you stop that, nothing will really change. I mean, right now, we have words that say, that list all the protected classes, and I really don't think that those words have stopped bullying on those protected classes in the schools. I mean, I can hear it. I saw some examples that I found that where Title IX was applied to discrimination for these issues, the legal opinion from the district attorney wasn't totally, you know, "Don't do it, do it," but it raised some important issues. I think eventually we can come up with some wording that will cover all students, and I think eventually that change will happen.
Marion, do you support School of Choice? Why or why not?
Well, School of Choice is here and it's going to be here regardless of, you know, how people feel about it. The School of Choice issue actually, I think, started for a lot of kids who were in inner-city situations where they, because of funding, which is another whole issue, they did not have access to adequate employment or education. And this permitted them to go to a neighboring community and be able to obtain that. We're seeing it now exercised for sometimes different reasons. There are many times that a family will see that there are resources in a district that will benefit that family. For example, for a long time, Celine didn't even have a swimming pool. So we would have people come to the board and ask us to authorize them to go to Mylan where they had a swimming pool, they could be on the swimming team because we didn't have one here. And then finally, it was at the rec center for a long time before it was even in our school. So people would want to go to another district, or there were better special education services before there was a WISD. There are still things that attract people to other districts. The problem that I've always had to some extent with School of Choice is that I like to see people in a district whose children are in the district being able to vote and be on a board of education for that district. Because if you don't have a pool and you want one, one of the ways to get you to support that bond issue is to have you stay in that district and get the pool here instead of going where it is. So I'm a little bit conflicted, but as I understand it now, there's some limits on how many children will come in here through School of Choice, and I think that's a rational way to resolve it because it does give you some flexibility, especially in families where they really need a program that we can't offer. Let's vote this way here.
When I actually looked up my campaign literature from when I ran four years ago, I was apparently not in favor of Schools of Choice. But when it came around and I got more information on it, some facts, I did vote for it when it came up. I think it's been a good program. I think we have, I mean, we, I don't think have had one issue with one School of Choice child. I know some of the grandchildren of a woman that my wife works with come to Celine Schools. They love it. In fact, they may have moved here by now. It also affords us a little bit of a chance to build a little more diversity in Celine, taking kids from other areas, giving them a little bit of an advantage. The thing I don't like about it is I don't like pitting school districting in school district to try to, you know, market and grab other students just to get their head count. I don't like to use it as a budget balancing thing, which we do not. I mean, our numbers are fairly limited, but it does help out in a pinch.
I, as not having any board experience thus far, I will be studying and figuring out exactly what the legal ramifications of School of Choice are, but I am a very much a proponent of a family having the opportunity to say, "My kids are not being educated well in my school. I would like to have them go someplace else." And if that is a measure of going to a private school or if we can enable students and families who are not able to afford private schools to make those sorts of decisions by saying, gee, I get some sort of a voucher that says I can go to school anywhere, I think that would be a great thing. I know there are pros and cons to that, so again, I will have to educate myself to see exactly, you know, what does School of Choice mean. But I am comfortable with the idea that people should be able to make their own choices.
Thank you. Back down to Paul. If you were presented with the option to consolidate Celine Schools with another district to reduce redundancy in services and support functions, would you support or oppose such a proposal? Why or why not?
I think consolidation could help in some areas, particularly in the business functions. I'm not even sure about transportation, but I know that Compton has been working on that. But even, you know, human resources functions might be able to be consolidated, but at some point, I think there's a diminishing return. I mean, if, say, we combine ourselves with Mylan, give us 8,000, 9,000 kids in our district, you eliminate one superintendent, so you save that salary, but then, now you've got -- and then you still need, you know, a layer of administration. You picked up 3,000 more kids. And I guess part of what I like is local control. I like the personalization. I mean, these guys that work in the schools every day, they go in the schools, they know the kids, you know, they know the teachers, they know everyone that works there, and it's like a little community, and that works well. We're already involved in purchasing pools. I guess where you can make the savings, where you don't take away from the educational part and the personal part, fine, do it. But I can't see having a bunch of mega-school districts throughout the state. I mean, DPS doesn't work, and we all know that. So, and I actually had a little conversation with Mr. Latch about this-- So, and I actually had a little conversation with Mr. Latch about this before, and he came from a place where they had countywide stuff. And he said if you started that way, it was kind of, you know, the norm and it worked out well. But, you know, I think a lot of us are set in our ways and we like some things the way they are.
Well, we already have taken advantage in some areas like special education, where you have the intermediate school districts. Now, that, that concept wasn't here until sometime, I think, in the 70s. And so that's delivered on a countywide basis. And we've already seen, I think, that you really can't do justice to specialized students on a, on a local level because you really have to have some very highly specialized facilities that they have out at the ISD and consultants who can help to mainstream the kids who can be in the district. So that clearly has worked. The vocational education building programs, in my opinion, has clearly worked. It's been wonderful. And sharing some of the vocat, not every school can have the same quality of an automotive shop and a print shop and a building program. So that's worked for us. But bigger is not usually better in terms of education. And Caroline Kennedy and Bill Gates have partnered up to do studies on education in America, and they've concluded beyond a doubt that smaller is better, bigger isn't better. They've gone into like New York City and other large cities and taken large physical plants and actually subdivided them into like four high schools where you can't even get from one quadrant to the other. So at the same time that that research was being done, we built a high school with a half a million square feet, which was exactly opposite from what the research had shown. So I would never be in favor of making our district bigger. I would be in favor of trying to keep it where it is right now. I think as companies get bigger, the percentage of administrators seems to get bigger, not smaller, and they lose contact with what's on the ground. So I would like to see it like this, and where we can have some savings or deliver better programs like in vocat and special ed, do it. But for the basic educational program, I'd like to have us retain our local control.
And I guess I would have to say I agree with what Paul and Marion have said, and that is, local control is what America was built on, and that we each were able to make our own decisions. And I agree that there are times when synergies across larger geographies does make sense, just as Marion had illustrated. But I think that the local flavor, I mean, I would much rather have my children be imbued with the values of the community that I choose to live in. And so that would be, you know, the idea of local control. If I wanted to raise my children in an urban setting, then I would move to an urban setting. If I wanted them to be part of a high school that had, you know, 6,000, 7,000 kids, which, you know, I've got nieces and nephews in the Chicago area who, they had really big schools, you know, they came out as great kids. So I know it does work. But I think local control is a, would be a preferred method of doing business, other than where, you know, synergies show that it works.
Okay. Will you keep the microphone? In the upcoming year, what do you see as the biggest challenge for Celine-area schools? And what do you think your strongest attribute is to aid in this challenge?
A month ago, I would have not had anything other than the down economy to specify as the major hurdle that we needed to address. And working through funding, and I know in a couple of years, we've got contract negotiations. But the discrimination debate that we've had over the, over the last month has been eye-opening. So I think that that particular thing will be the issue that we're going to be talking about in the next year. And I think that coming up with methods to enforce anti-bullying, anti-discrimination, ways to say that everybody should be safe at school. I don't care if you're black, I don't care if you're gay, I don't care if you're, you decide you want to wear your hair with, you know, the purple and green and yellow, or whether you want to be a football player, or whether you want to be a Catholic who decides to say, gee, Jesus loves you. Everyone deserves to be protected. And I think that's going to be the hot issue for, you know, the coming year.
Well, I agree that that issue is not going to go away. But frankly, I don't think keeping students safe alone should be our goal. I think our goal has to be that every student in this district can reach his or her personal potential. It's a loss to us as a society when we have people like Aunt Apollo stand up and say, there were good times and bad times, but he remembers the bad times here, and it limited his potential, limited his ability to be a positive role model for other young people that were struggling with some of the issues he was as a teenager. So I, I want them to be more than safe. I want them to be successful as students here and to come back 10 years later and say, thank you, Celine, you were there when I needed you. You have to model that by not just talking about cultural problems, I don't agree with the lifestyle and that offends my religion. When you say that, and you say it from a position of power in a society, it makes people feel less than good about themselves. So I'd like to challenge us as a community, whether I get elected or not, to do better in that regard and to be affirming to everyone and not just say, we want them safe, say we want them successful. But I think one of the hugest challenges for us for probably five years is going to be the economy. What to do about schools declining enrollment, and we want to do better here, and we're going to have to do it with less. And I keep saying, we have to think our way out of it, not tax our way out of it. I've run a business, I've had to cope with a recession in the 80s or the recession we have now, and I would hope that I could bring that background to bear in a, in a meaningful discussion so that we can reach goals and priorities by consensus and not by division.
I think financial issues are kind of a given, so I'm going to go a slightly different way with 21st century skills. I think this latest downturn in the state of Michigan has proven that we need to change the way we look at how we're educating our kids. The manufacturing base is gone, it may come back, we're not sure. When I used to hire people, you know, I looked not so much for their pure raw skills, but I looked for, you know, how they worked together as a team, were they comfortable? Just sitting, talking, discussing ideas, not exactly. I wrote 10 lines of programming code, I'm good, I can do that. They're looking for far more different skills out there today. Team building is one of those things, working together with people. I interviewed a guy that he was sweating so bad just during the interview, I couldn't possibly understand how he would work under a pressure situation when things were not working right. And I knew he was nervous because I'd been there too, but even some of the other attributes that he had were good, but he seemed not like the whole pressure thing. There's a lot of pressure on the workplace right now. Number one, to keep your job, number two, to try to keep your economy going. So I think those skills are important. Technology is important. The kids learn, I mean, I can't tell you why they don't all have thumb carpal tunnel because of the way they move their texting, but those are the kind of skills I think we need to focus on next year.
Marion, we have a series of Celine Education Association questions. Are you endorsed by the SDA? If you are, why did you receive their endorsement? And if you have their endorsement, how would that affect you during contract negotiations?
Well, first of all, I understand that the SDA is supporting Mr. Carter and not me, and I'm a write-in candidate. I don't know if they would have, if they would have had more time to think about it. I'm concerned about being independent. If I had been offered money and support from the union, I probably would have declined and had a bake sale because I want to be able to be independent. I don't want to have problems explaining to somebody who supported me financially why I have to take a position they may not agree with. There's going to have to be discussion with the union around lots of issues that are coming up. The contract expires another couple of years. This is, you know, these are tough times, and you see every, in every context where you have a large bargaining unit, whether it's a city of Detroit, or it's an airline union, or it's an educational union, you have to have, you know, people who can sit down at a table and talk about shared sacrifice, shared goals, shared visions, and how can we get there? And hopefully, it's not a battleground. You build relationships so that you trust each other, you're able to understand what each other is saying. But I would not have taken financial support from the union, I wouldn't have let them pay my filing fee. I would have appreciated if they saw virtues I could bring to the table. I believe that many of the union members are going to vote for me. They've already indicated they're going to vote for me as individuals, but as a union, I would be uncomfortable taking their support. And in the 12 years I was on the board, I never took support from the union, and I feel a lot of the union members respect it, the way I work through issues at the board level. So the answer is I don't have it, and I wouldn't have taken it.
On my first campaign, I spent $8 in some sense, and because of inflation this year, I've spent $9 in some sense. I have actually had people ask me about giving me money for my campaign, and I told them to please send the money to the foundation for Celine area schools. I agree with Marion, I don't want to be beholden to any, I don't want to call them interest group, but to anybody. I make my decisions based on a lot of factors, and I don't want to downline, be, you know, oh, you took this position for this reason or that reason because I supported you. It's really not what I'm about. So, no.
So I guess I'm the guy. I don't, I don't see it as a detractor. I did pay my own filing fee, the $100 or $105 or whatever it was. They, the union has provided signs for me. At this point, that has been the essence of our financial relationship. When I was considering running for the board, one of the things that I did was I reached out to teachers and said, you know, do you think there would be any way that I could help? You know, and I also have spoken to administration people. The fact that the union has backed me and is saying that they do back me, we had early conversations where I said, you know, I don't care if you guys, you know, get me elected, I will not be doing what you tell me. That is, I will not be beholden to you. But what I will do is I will work very hard to work for a fair solution, work for a solution that in most instances is probably not the solution that you expect. Because the tools that I'm going to bring, the theory of constraints and the logical thinking processes, have the ability to get you to actually understand why you do what you do, and provide you the ability to get those assumptions, those things that you don't even think about, out on the table and be able to see them. And when you see the cause and effect analysis, the cause and effect relationships that come from those things that you do, the things that you think when you don't, really aren't thinking about anything, using that information, we are able to build win-win solutions that will provide win value for the unions and win value for the administration and win value for our students and district.
Count it, Paul. If you were presented with an SDA contract in 2011 that did not have a premium share, excuse me, that not have a premium sharing for SDA members equal to the premium sharing of the support staff, would you approve of the contract?
It depends on what the premium sharing is for. If we have restructured our healthcare to provide less cost to the district because of changes in healthcare plans, that they're not so expensive, I could be tempted to vote yes for that. I'm not typically likely to do that based on my past performance. I think from a healthcare perspective, if you're not giving some money to pay for your healthcare, then you're, as a consumer, you're not concerned about the charges, you're not concerned about looking for, I don't, not necessarily you want to go shopping for healthcare, you usually trust your doctors. But I just recently had a surgery and they filled me incorrectly, and I took it to them and got my money back. So if you're not paying premium, you're not paying co-patient, you're not paying deductibles, you're not invested in the cost of your healthcare. So, kind of a roundabout way, I'd have to see the whole structure, but I think cost sharing should be done across the board.
You know, when, when people work for a living, their compensation consists of what they're paid and their benefits. And the benefits include things like healthcare, paid vacation, the salary, sabbaticals, compensation for tax-deferred annuities or in the form of retirement contributions. I tend to look at a whole picture. So if I were to look at, you know, the total compensation of a staff person compared to other districts or the private sector compared to the teaching union, and if I concluded that their total compensation was inequitable based on what they were providing to the district and the value of that, then I'd want to adjust their total compensation. And I would hope that we talked to the union about how they wanted that adjusted, whether they want to contribute to healthcare, they want more money in their salary, they want more time off. It all comes out of the same pocket. So to just sit here and say, everybody's going to get paid the same, when in fact, some bargaining units have benefits that the other bargaining units don't, I think it's making a decision like that and just a, you know, politically charged comment that's ridiculous. So I would want to sit down and cost out what is getting paid, talk to the union about what form they want to be paid in, and hopefully reach a logical conclusion. There's some inequities between bargaining units, in my opinion, right now. And I wouldn't want it to get worse by just sort of blanket across the board, you know, coming to a conclusion. We can do better in the healthcare, the way we're providing that coverage right now or those benefits right now. And I'd like to address that before we go any further, see if we can reduce those costs by being a policyholder.
Would you repeat the question? If you were presented with an SDA contract in 2011 that did not have a premium sharing for SDA members equal to the premium sharing of the support staff, would you approve of the contract?
At this point, I don't know. I will have to learn how that works and be able to understand where the value and how that value gets, gets presented to the district or back to the kids. I am all about fairness and all about honesty and all about shared services and the ability for people to be able to earn what they, what they, you know, add their value. But at this point, I'm not familiar with the existing contracts and will need to understand it.
The next question, please hold on to the microphone. How do you feel about privatization?
Privatization is a, is a hot topic for, for the services, for people who are providing the services. I can't just rule it out completely, but I also don't think that it is a first place that we would go. What it does is, or what it requires is the analysis that I've talked about, and trying to understand what it is that we are trying to solve. What is the problem? What is the underlying root cause that we need to address? And if privatization is a tool that can solve that, and we are able to get consensus or able to get, people solving their, you know, if people are able to understand that they can get the value they need, either with it or without it, then, you know, I think we would make that decision at that time.
No say.
Well, I'm not a big fan of privatization. Generally speaking, when you privatize in a, in a district, you're talking about Generally speaking, when you privatize in a district, you're talking about people in the staff services, food services, the bus drivers and other support staff. And privatization is a failed way or a not-so-transparent way of trying to deprive them of healthcare and retirement contributions and that sort of thing. I don't understand how, you know, a private company can deliver the same sort of service at less money to us and benefit any of those employees. There's profit that comes out, and that profit could have been paid by us to those employees. All you have to do have been a company and hired a temporary worker and discovered what you're paying manpower or Kelly Girl and what they're paying the worker. There's a huge gap there. I would like to try to, you know, keep these people employed by us so, for example, if we had policies, anti-discrimination policies and so on, they would apply to those people. Because if they're not our employees, they're not necessarily going to benefit from our policies. We're not going to be able to see that they're sitting there sweating during an interview because they're just going to show up and you're going to hope somebody else did a criminal background check and trained them and that they're committed to the district. So, I'm really not in favor of that. A private company can do it at less money. We need to figure out how we can do it at less money, just like they are, and give those people the profit that we pay to the company and protect them with our policies and hopefully with some benefits that people who work that hard should get. So, I'm not, you know, in favor of doing that.
I want to zip back to the guy who was sweating at the interview just for a minute because I guess I lost my point there. The point is that we need to instill the confidence in our kids when they're out there looking for jobs to be confident in what they do and that. Privatization. As a last resort, I think privatization could work, but the examples we have out there that have been done in the state, some have been successful, some have not. I think there's probably more have not than have been successful. I'm not sure about that. It's a tough choice because we can technically privatize everyone in the district except for the teachers. There are efficiencies because you usually hire back the same people that you privatized, but I think the only monetary savings is probably the money that goes into retirement because they'll get a less benefit there. As our staff has shrunk a little bit, the dollar amount, I think it's smaller and smaller, our support staff and that have taken the brunt of our cuts in the district lately. I think they do a phenomenal job. And they were willing to step up to the plate and see the financial problems that are going on in the state, and they rose up to the occasion. So, right now, I don't think I would support privatization.
To Marion. What changes do you feel should be made with all contracts, administrative, teacher, and support?
Well, I think all the contracts. You know, when you, again, I think you have to look at total compensation. What happens often is that contracts, every year you negotiate a 2% or 3% raise across the board, and it just gets layered onto what you've already had. And you have to certainly, once a decade, sit down and look at the contract from the ground up. You can't rewrite it every single time, but I've been through the contract, I've got it here. I'm surprised to see things in the contract in 2010 that were there in 1978 that are surprising to me. And on top of that, we layered and layered and layered. So, I'd like to find a way that we can go back and, we're in a new century now, and sort of think a little differently about this. I'd like to look at total compensation. I'm concerned about the evaluation process that I see in the contract. As I read the contract, I write, teachers have 25 minutes of evaluation every three years and a process to respond to that. And I know it's expensive to evaluate, but it doesn't have to be done one-on-one, it can be done by groups, it can be done through self-evaluation. But I think we have to talk about total compensation, accountability, and improvement. And fortunately, there's lots of opportunities in the contract for people to improve their teaching and their performance in the district. But I really think we've got to prepare for contract time farther out, not on the eve of school starting or on the eve of the expiration, and start really thinking through what we can do together that makes sense in this district.
What was the question? Yes, what changes do you feel should be made with all contracts, administrative, teacher, and support?
At this point, I'm not familiar with the contracts, so I don't have any sort of a broad brush. But again, personal value. I think that one of the things that I will bring to the table is the ability to have the administration and the unions, the teachers, the support people come together and talk about the ideas that they have. How could things be better? Would it, does it make a big difference if we make one little change on a contract? Or are there other things that need to be addressed? So, and again, I've got some time to learn about contracts and study and understand the differences between the different contracts and find ways that we can solve these problems.
Paul.
I think I agree that the contracts across all the negotiating groups in the district should have similarities in structure, particularly with some of the race-to-the-top programs you're talking about, increase days in school, increase time. They're kind of going all over the board with different things. And, I mean, our SEA contract right now is tapped out in minutes. I'm not sure about days, but there's restrictions in there that aren't agile enough to make quick changes if the feds come down and say, your kids will be in school 190 days a year or whatever they say. So, we need to, I think, like Marion said, it's a thick thing, it's got a lot of stuff in there. And I'd like to see it streamlined. I'd like to see, you know, simpler compensation formulas, simpler everything. It's just when you read it, you're confused. There's one interesting note in there. We've been talking about discrimination in teachers. A teacher can be fired for not paying their union dues. That's in the contract. The board supports that as the language in the contract. So, you're right. I mean, if it was that stuff back in 78, it's time to clean it up.
Okay, our predetermined time for ending is eight o'clock. I'll ask one more question. There are two questions that did come in that were left, would be left unanswered. They are a little more specific to a single candidate. I'm sure that these three candidates would be happy to answer your questions afterwards, those two in particular, or anything else. The last question started with Paul. What new opportunities are there to generate revenue for the school system?
That's a tough one in this economy. We need to start probably doing some more partnerships with what local businesses we do still have, which are many. Grant writing is an art. We did the Pepsi thing this year thanks to all the emails and the voting. Everyone got on board with that, it was a good thing. You know, we're getting money from Toyota, Walmart, I mean, some of the local companies. We need to expand that. The Foundation for Selenary Schools does a great job supporting the teachers. We've never really done fundraising the way fundraising is done, say like at U of Emory, the major universities, to get that foundation pool up. I suggested when the Camaro came out, they raffled one of those off. They probably had money for a few years, but didn't have time to do that, nor could we find a Camaro to be raffled off. So, those revenue sources are, will not fill the void that the economy is driving, but they're also important things to start. I mean, our relationships with the local universities are important. They all drive synergy. I mean, we know we have excellent schools and we just need to build on that.
Well, I, the Celine Foundation, again, I think was formed in probably the 80s. And the nice thing about that, it's sort of like a united way. You can have people on there who take little bits of money from here and there and can do big things with it because it's pooled and, you know, people have goals that they can set and they're funded. And I think it's wonderful. It'd be great to have an endowment here like the University of Michigan has. That didn't happen overnight. It's wisely invested. You know, they get criticized because they don't want to do a lot of spending, they do a lot of investing. But we have alumni who've left this district who could be invited to contribute on a regular basis. The university uses people to approach members of their alumni association with opportunities for state planning, which we could do here. There are people that you can, you know, you can hire to come in and consult with you about trying to develop that. The university sets goals for their endowment and achieves them and has some popular ways of doing it. They built, you know, onto the big house to try and provide special accommodations for people that are wealthy and can afford it. We could think about doing things around football season, homecoming to really have special events for alumni who've come back to showcase the high school maybe have never been in it and so on. If it's a goal we set, we could achieve that. But I think we're going to probably have to start looking at expenditures here and keeping them down as a form of, you know, there's waste of outs of budget. You can increase income or you can cut costs. And I think for right now, trying to raise a lot of money in this economy is going to be very difficult. I think we're going to have to be very careful about how we spend what we have and try to be more collaborative about fundraising and not just pay-to-play. I'm not a big fan of that. I think we need to approach people that are successful that have left our district.
Opportunities to generate revenue for this school system.
This is something that I have been thinking about, the idea of an endowment, which I guess it does exist already. I think that that could be pursued. I know my college, the Colorado School of Mines, you know, sends me a letter quite often and says, gee, can you pony up some bucks? And, you know, you remember all those great feelings you had out there. That is one opportunity. Another opportunity, I think, is to take some of the raw materials that we have and that we create as Celine schools and make them more globally available. The idea that I'm toying with is finding some method for capturing our teaching expertise, either videos or other ways, and then presenting that across the internet and either having, you know, the Celine Area University or the Celine Area, just some way to take advantage of the amazing power of having, you know, 2 billion people able to say, gee, I'll pitch in a penny, you know, and say, whether it's surrounded by advertising or whether we have... The example that I'm thinking about that I read in a magazine is there's a gentleman on the East Coast who does essentially kind of a whiteboard sort of thing. And he's produced over the last couple of years, maybe, you know, 1,000 different lessons, everything from how to, you know, how to do addition right up through a bunch of other, you know, more sophisticated topics. He started out doing it just for his, you know, his kids and his relatives because he couldn't be there, you know, physically. But that's just one idea that I had come up with, thinking about, well, you know, how can we generate more revenue? Again, you know, people are saying that this down economy is a, is something we can't beat, but there are solutions that are just waiting for us to pick them. And they will be unusual, but they will fit the bill, cover our costs and will... I've got a red card.
Yes, you do, but you have the microphone. Now, we're done with the questions, and now each candidate will get up to two minutes to summarize or say whatever he or she would like.
One of the things that I hope you've understood from me answering the questions is that I am going to bring creative, potentially not standard solutions, and that I'm going to ask people to sit down and truly think about what it is that they believe. Think about how they can help others, how we can work together to come up with a win-win solution for both sides. There's a book out there called The Choice that was written by Ellie Goldratt that has the essence of what I drive for, and that is that we live in a world that is inherently simple, which is amazingly complex. But as you get down deeper and deeper into how things work, there are typically one or two things that if you were to just tweak that a little bit, it significantly changes how the answers come out. So, using that as a guide and some of the creativeness that I know we have in the district. You know, I'm not the smartest guy on the planet here. I'm not going to come up and say, gee, let's paint everything green and everybody will be happy. But what I will do is I will work amazingly hard to bring people together and to provide, you know, truly win-win solutions. I guess that covers it.
Well, I have actually a page on the net, and I have a platform on that page. It's called Fable for Students. It's a number four, so when you go home tonight, you can look at that, and that'll sort of explain this campaign of ours. And it's got a Facebook page, and you can click on that. I really care about the schools. After having been here, you realize that serving in this capacity is not just about negotiation of contracts, curriculum, policies that are very important, but buildings and grounds, buses, the budget, links to Lansing, and understanding of the law here. And we have to understand our mission here, and that's one thing I think I would clearly bring to this. And I think our mission is to educate kids to go out into an increasingly diverse global community, not little Celine because my son doesn't live here anymore. You all came here from someplace else, and your kids are probably going to leave here to go work somewhere else. So, you know, our little personal experiences and our values, you know, our values and our experiences, we're going to have to learn to work and succeed with people who have had different experiences and different values. And I would hope that if I could be on this board, that, you know, our teachers, all of them, and our students will come back 10 years later to their high school reunion or a board meeting and say, thank you. And that would be my goal, and I'd appreciate your vote. I hope you look at our website. And that would be my goal, is to make sure everything that I did as a board member would translate to something significant for you as citizens and for the school community.
Thank you. Since we voted to extend our terms for November elections, my first term actually is going to go four and a half years. And I was, so five years ago, as a bald face lied to by two members of the audience, it said, Paul, it's only two meetings a month. Yeah, come join us. So, those two meetings a month turned into about 20 hours a week and a lot of work. But there's times, most times, I enjoy doing this job, and I do my real job that actually pays the bills at the House. I think over the past four and a half years, three of those have been kind of dedicated to policy. I think that's an important role that I played. I pretty much put it out there just the way I feel most times. I think my experience over the last four years has been pretty remarkable. I think a lot of people just think schools run themselves. They just go, 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 and people go from nine to five and that's it. That's totally not true. This is a district of the most hard-working people I think I've ever run across. They are remarkable, and I would like to be a part of that for four more years, although some people would say I'm crazy. But I enjoy it. I want to see this district succeed, so I'm hoping you'll support me. Thank you.
Okay, a few quick things before we go. First of all, let's have a round of applause for our candidates. Next, as you can see, SCTN is here, and they should have a replay of this on TV and online next week, so you can review it before you vote. Lastly, I hope that this forum has provided you insight into our three candidates, and I sincerely hope you'll all go out and vote next Tuesday. I sincerely hope you'll all go out and vote next Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you all for attending. Have a good night.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, I'm sorry, two weeks from now.
Thank you.
Vote her or her.
Yeah.